We'll call to order the February 6, 2025, meeting of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Seeing with all three commissioners present, I will ask Marty Moss to lead us to the pledge of allegiance, and then the Eagles fight. We'll do that. We gotta be. We will see everyone at the rally after this, which is going to be on the courthouse steps. We're excited to celebrate. We were actually just in Norristown at the Elmwood Park Zoo this weekend. We had a nice pep rally with a number of players. We got to wear a Super Bowl ring, which was, yeah, definitely not my size, but I'm here for good photos. We'll talk about that. I just want to open this meeting by acknowledging first, you know, two really tragedies that hit close to home in the last few weeks. Sorry to shift so quickly, but I think it's important to recognize that there were former Monaco residents in the plane collision, the collision of a commercial airliner in Washington and the helicopter, including at least one member of the Philadelphia skating club and Art Moore family, as well as other former Monaco residents. The crash claimed the lives of 67 people, and it's really an unimaginable tragedy. And we're keeping their families in our prayers, as well as those who were affected by the incident two days later here in northeast Philly on Friday, where seven people lost their lives and 24 more were injured. We are hoping for a full recovery for all of those who were injured and, again, are praying for those and their families. I think it's really important for us to recognize that so much of what we do in government is critical to everyday functions like helping planes get from one place to another, and that's true locally in different ways in terms of the funding that we administer across the board in our offices, whether it's in the civil and criminal justice system, in the Office of Public Health, Mental Health, Children and Youth. All of the services that we provide are absolutely critical, and sometimes people may not realize that until they're, until they're absent or not working the way they should. And last week, there was a freeze on federal funding. We did the analysis for Monaco. There's over $140 million in federal funding that was frozen. Thankfully, thanks to advocacy, as well as local government stepping up, that was rescinded. There are still, however, offices that are affected and are, at the very least, uncertain about the funding that they can get. I think part of what I hope that we can do as a county is fully tell the story of what that funding means, what it would mean for it to disappear, and how we can effectively advocate at the federal level for the resources that we know we need and we've relied on as a county. For example, our Office of Public Health, it's 95% funded by the federal government and serves tens of thousands of people every year. Our Early Learning Resource Center, which serves thousands of Monaco families, 3,000 lies on the federal government for 50% of its funding. Office of Mental Health, which serves 60,000 people, utilizes 1.5 million in federal funding. Children and Youth, which serves 5,800 families, and over 10,000 people each year receives 8.5 million in federal funding. There are many, many more projects, including roads and bridges, that hundreds of thousands of Monaco residents rely on every day. So we are going to continue working with our departments, as well as other communities, rely on federal funding to make sure that we are prepared, should there be changes or freezes or cuts that come, so that we can best adapt to those and also make the case to our, we have three members of Congress who represent Montgomery County and different parts of Montgomery County, and we'll be making the case to each of those on your critical resources that you need for our residents. I also want to recognize that February is Black History Month, and we're excited to take this opportunity to reflect on the many contributions that African Americans have made to our community here in Monaco, and few organizations have been so integral to the Black experience in America as the NAACP. So today, we're honored to be joined here by presidents of several local NAACP branches, and we're going to ask them to share a few words. But we have Maurice Davis, who's president of the Willigrove NAACP. We have, thank you Maurice for being here. We have Brian Reese Turner, who is president of the Mainline NAACP. Dr. William Taylor, who is president of the Cheltenham NAACP, as well as Sheikh Anwar Muhammad, who's president of the Ambler NAACP, and I know was just recently elected to that a few weeks ago. So we're tremendously grateful for the work that you've done advocating for civil rights, protecting voting rights, access to healthcare, empowering the next generation of leaders, and being critical members of our community who advocate for equity and justice for all. So your partnership is essential to us and the work that we do as a county, and I invite you to please join us and share any remarks you have at the podium about the work that you're doing, about the importance of that, of Black History Month, anything that you'd like to share before we present you with accommodation.
Greetings. How you guys doing? Of course, it's a tremendous honor to receive accommodation from the Commissioners of Montgomery County. You mentioned Black History Month. I tell people that I'm cool with every other month, not just February. So Black History Month's every day. I'm not just cool in February. I'm really cool in the summertime when my melanin is popping. As far as the NAACP, tremendous honor to be a president of the first, boldest, and oldest civil rights organization in this country. It is a tremendous honor for me to, to fight the battles for the people that, that need the most, right, for our civil rights. So this is something that is an ongoing process. We appreciate everybody's assistance in that. We look forward to a magnificent 2025. We just had a branch election, so all the presidents are new, so we look forward to working with you and moving things forward. That's what it's all about, moving things forward, and happy Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Brian Reese Turner, president of the Mainline Branch. I just want to say thank you for the commendation. The work that we continue to do every day is super important, as you've already stated. This year, obviously, with everything that's changing, the work is just going to become that much more difficult, but we're still determined to ensure that everyone's rights are protected, especially in terms of equity in our county, particularly on the Mainline. So that's just what continues what the fight is. And if anyone's interested, we're looking for young people to help us with the fight and get them encouraged in some justice work. Thank you.
Greetings, and thank you for keeping us on your radar. I'm Dr. Taylor from the Cheltenham area branch of the NAACP, and I would like to give a couple of shout-outs to some organizations that we are in partnership with, and that would be Community to State Care, Community Heroes, and Communities for Change, and also the Montgomery County Advisory Council for Philadelphia Human Relations Committee Commission. I would think as a cluster, as relates to the NAACP and the various branches, that every morning we get up with a thought in mind, what are we going to speak out about today? You cease to exist if you do not speak out about things that matter, and there are a lot of things that matter at this point in time in terms of the climate of our nation. So I'm going to leave you with that thought. You need to speak out about something that is going on. It may not be in your life, it may not be in somebody else's life, maybe somebody that you know, or maybe somebody that you don't know, but each and every one of us are being affected about what is going on in our atmosphere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My official is Maurice, but I oftentimes go by Tony, my nickname, since my dad's name was Maurice, and it's got a confusion when there arises when anybody called the house and asked for Maurice, I gave the phone to Dad. And so I'm also retiring Montgomery County Community College, and I started doing Black History facts and quotes 30 years ago at the college, and I put them out for the entire campus. It got so good that many of my colleagues, who looked more like this room than me, would send me things to send out. It's a travesty to be going through what we're talking about in this nation, coming from those that want to change what's going on, when people really want to figure out more what, how we are alike than not alike. And so I'll kind of leave you with that. I just want to let everybody also know that I'm on the Board of Advisory for Abumson Cancer Center at, at the University of Pennsylvania, and I'm on a 2050 planning committee. So if folks need information regarding cancers and whatnot, or want to send me information of your results, et cetera, they're gathering that. It's a phenomenal group at the University of Pennsylvania. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to us starting our meetings again with the Commissioners through the NAACP. We used to meet monthly, so let's get this poppin'. Thank you.
Thank you. So why don't you all come up, and we'll present the commendations. Do you want to make any comments? Go ahead. Of course, go ahead.
Good morning, all. I am the interim president because we haven't gotten an election that needs. I just wanted to stand in as the, as the, my name is Theresa Brown-Parris, and I am an implant from the Caribbean, but I'm here. I just want to say thank you for what you've done for the county, and we appreciate you being here with us also. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Would you like to make any comments now? Okay, so we'll wait, but why don't you come up so we can present the commendations?
Have you asked for a check and wait? Yeah, thanks.
So in the spirit of our commitment to civil rights, I wanted to address some of the conversation that has been happening around DEI and explain a little bit about why I supported last meeting the expansion of our efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and why that's so important. And I think the leaders here know it better than anyone in terms of civil rights. That's really the heart of what DEI is, and I think unfortunately, there's some, a sense out there that it is somehow at odds with the idea of merit. And the facts and the data that I've seen have all shown the opposite, which is that our efforts at being more inclusive, at ensuring that we represent every community in the county, ensuring that when we make decisions about hiring or how we run a major organization like a county government, that by ensuring that we have inclusive practices, we're achieving the excellence and bringing on the most qualified people that we possibly could. So when we think about what DEI means for the county, it's, it can be something as simple as having disability accommodation to ensure that someone with a disability is able to access either the same services or work in our workplace and offer all the talents they have. It can mean that someone who is in pregnancy, is having a child, is not discriminated against, is given instead actually support through paid leave and other initiatives that we have been proud to enact at this county across the board to ensure that we're recruiting the most talented people and also accommodating things that are just part of everyday life that allow us to, to be more inclusive. And so when I think about some of the pieces of the agenda and the priorities that we have in expanding these positions, it's, it's simply part of our job as representing all of Montgomery County and ensuring that we meet our goals for all of our residents. Through the election, we saw this when we produced our voting materials in nine different languages for the first time. That was for people who are citizens, who have every right to vote, who simply are our neighbors and haven't had government work in a way that was most accessible to them. So when we have these debates and conversations about what inclusion means, I hope we think about the fact that we're simply opening up government to more people, more residents, and the services that we are supposed to provide and are mandated to do so. So that's been the priority for me, and I remain committed to that work. Before I turn it over to my fellow commissioners for opening comments, I'll just say that next week we'll have a conversation about where we've been the last year as a county and some of the plans and initiatives that we hope to embark on this year. We're going to have a state of the county event Tuesday, February 18th, at the Community College at 10:00 a.m. It's an opportunity for us to come together and talk about some of the key priorities that this, that this board has held and will continue in the year to come. So with that, I will turn it over to Fisher Winder.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for braving the weather to be with us today. So I'll start my comments off, just to take a moment of reflection for the last couple of weeks. I want to talk a little bit about, in a similar vein, to the diversity, equity, inclusion efforts that have been under attack nationally, and then I want to talk about the work that we continue to do, especially in celebration of Black History Month. So what I realize, you know, as I spend so much time on social media and watching the news, is that DEI is clearly misunderstood. At its core, DEI is about opportunity. It ensures that every person, regardless of background, has the access to the same resources, support, and pathways that help us become successful. It's not about excluding anyone. It's about expanding the table so that everyone has a seat. Yet DEI has become a misrepresented concept, especially in the last couple of weeks, often framed as divisive, when in reality, it's about fairness and belonging. Some believe it prioritizes one group over another, but the truth is that when we remove barriers and create a level playing field, everyone in our community benefits. So I want to talk about who benefits from DEI. People of color, like me, ensuring fair opportunities in employment, education, and leadership. Women, addressing gender disparities in pay, career advancement, and representation. People with disabilities, improving accessibility and accommodations in workplaces and public spaces. LGBTQ plus individuals, creating inclusive environments where people can be their most authentic selves. Veterans, supporting career transitions and mental health services. Older adults, combating age discrimination and ensuring access to resources. Religious minorities, protecting against discrimination and fostering understanding. Rural and low-income communities, expanding access to education, healthcare, and economic opportunities. Here in Montgomery County, our commitment to DEI is not about checking a box. It's about building stronger communities, workplaces, and institutions where people feel valued and empowered. It's about recognizing disparities, addressing them with intention, and ensuring that no one, I mean no one, is left behind. We must continue to have these conversations, push past misconception, not be complicit, and remain committed to the work of equity, because a county that works for everyone is a county that truly thrives. I want to thank the NAACP representatives for coming in here today, and we will get those meetings back on the calendar. And thank you for your work that you do in our communities every single day, not just during Black History Month. At our last Board of Commissioners meeting, I mentioned some of the reasons why we acknowledge February as Black History Month. We celebrate the contributions and achievements of Black leaders throughout this country's history, because these leaders fought for and advocated for basic civil rights that were not historically available to all of us. The right to vote, the right to housing, the right to pay, to be paid for their labor and to be paid a fair wage, the right to public education, the right to congregate, the right to be served at a lunch counter, the right to swim in a public hole, the right to take a seat on a bus. Tuesday, February 4th, was Rosa Parks' birthday. We remember her role in the Montgomery-Alabama bus boycott. Her acts of peaceful disobedience against an unfair system almost bankrupted the bus, the bus company, ultimately ending segregation on the public buses and propelled the nation's civil rights movement. It's also worth noting that Black Americans made up 75% of bus ridership in Montgomery, Alabama at that time. On Wednesdays throughout this month, the county is hosting virtual events to reflect on this year's national theme, African Americans and Labor. So Rosa Parks is just one of the many Cheerios that we'll celebrate during this month, but I want you to join our amazing events throughout the month of February, and we'll end the month with a celebration in person on Wednesday, February 26th. It will include performing arts and lunch. I'd like to also take a moment to honor those who took time out of their busy schedules, our talented Black History Month committee, for them, for their work putting together this month's event. And I'm going to call out some of our staff, Terrence Barnes from our Recovery Office, Robert Cartier from our Planning Commission, Charles Clark from HHS, Janita Fields from HHS, Laura Gonzalez from HHS, Anna Goodman from HHS, Myla Hayes is also at HHS, we've got a good team over there, the Honorable Hakeem Jones from our District Court, Anita Robinson from HHS, Sonya Sanders from our Sheriff's Office, Naomi Winchester from Security, and Tanisha Williams from HHS. Thank you all for taking the time to put together a really great program, and we appreciate your efforts despite these times in continuing to bring these events to life. Next up, Neil and I had the opportunity to attend Governor Josh Shapiro's third budget address at the Commonwealth, in the Commonwealth. We want to commend the governor for listening to communities across Pennsylvania and prioritizing funding initiatives that will address some of our most pressing needs right here in Montgomery County. This includes funding to increase retention of staff in childcare and early childhood education, and for direct support workers. Funding for critical healthcare initiatives such as postpartum care and mental health support, behavioral health staffing, and protecting affordable healthcare coverage for Pennsylvanians. Governor Shapiro outlined extremely comprehensive plans that tackles everyday issues facing our friends and neighbors. And so I look forward to working with the governor, our state legislature, and bringing those plans to life and bringing those resources right here to Montgomery County. And ending on a high note, you notice we're all wearing our Eagles gear. They may be changed before I came out here. Another major event taking place this weekend is, of course, our Super Bowl. Commissioner McKeesha and DeBello and I had the pleasure of attending the Elmwood Park Zoo rally, which was mentioned earlier, so let's keep the energy going. So I know the weather is a little suspect today, but after today's board meeting at noon, we'll be doing a pep rally outside of the courthouse to cheer our birds on to victory in New Orleans. So who wants to lead us in an Eagles chant? It's not going to be Marty. Who's a die, who's a diehard Eagles fan? Come on, somebody's got to do it. Judy, you're going to, Judy, you're doing it. Okay, you're going to do it, Judy. Ready?
Eagles fly on the road to victory.
We need more energy, come on. All right, nice work. I need to learn all the [inaudible]. All right, turn it over to Commissioner.
I want to apologize. Just want to note for everyone on Zoom, I did mute my microphone intentionally.
You muted it? That's cheating. Would you need a red in your cheeks, goes with your sweater?
Let's talk to follow, Commissioner Wider. First, I want to thank our representatives here from the NAACP this morning. I've had the opportunity to meet some so far across the county, and I look forward to have the pleasure of meeting everyone. And I too would like to see us reengage and have those meetings, you know, monthly or whatever it may be, so I think that's, that would be great, and I want to thank you for being here this morning. I think the service, what you're providing in your communities is extremely I think the service, what you're providing in your communities is extremely important, and we want to be able to see that continue, you know, moving forward as well. So thank you for everything that you're doing. As mentioned, we did have multiple plane crashes. One is very upsetting, two is really upsetting. I mean, they're all really upsetting, don't get me wrong. And it's unfortunate that the loss of life is so tragic, and we want to keep those families affected in our thoughts and prayers. I want to commend all of the first responders, community members who rushed to the scene to help. We're always amazed by what they do. A lot of us run away from danger, but our first responders are ready to go, and they will rush towards the dangers that await them, you know, with fires and whatever accidents may occur. In this instance, jumping into the Potomac River, which is right above freezing, and they, all the first responders were engaged in recovery efforts for days, you know, in that cold, frigid waters. So they dedicate their lives for helping us, and we should always continually appreciate everything that they do, and always remember to thank our first responders at any opportunity because they, many times, are unsung heroes, and we got to make sure that we show and demonstrate our love for them and our support. So, and we're working hard to increase our recruitment of EMS personnel in the county, so there's always an opportunity for you to take that very rewarding step towards what I believe is an awesome career. And I look for good things in the future for our EMS personnel. So also, I just want to mention that, for those that don't know, I sit on the SRPRA Board. That's the board that's looking at running the rail project, regaging, having a rail project from Redding to Philadelphia. And it's, I'm not sure where it's going to go over the years, but we're actually, as a committee, working really hard. And of all the projects across the country that are looking at transportation rail projects like this, we're, the committee itself, we're out in front, and we're, in some instances, setting the tone or to get the, you know, the federal funding that's necessary to put that rail project in place. I was elected last week to serve as the Board Vice Chair, and our own Planning Commissioner Director, Scott France, will also continue his role as Secretary. He does an amazing job, so I'm excited for Scott to continue on that project. So we are making good progress, and we'll be more updates coming. Also, Valentine's Day is next Friday. I hope everyone has some exciting plans lined up for their Valentine's Day. I'm sure that guys and gals will be out buying those last-minute box of candy, or roses, or whatever it may be. I know that, I always like to wait till the last last of the moment to buy something, but I'm sure it'll be, hopefully it'll be a beautiful Friday, unlike our rainy, icy, cold day today. But, you know, we look forward to everyone having an enjoyable Valentine's Day. Quickest historical tidbit, February, Redstone, because the Agatha says, is because of Saint Valentine's warrant that Emerson's ring during his time as a priest from Rome in the third century. So I like these little tidbits of information. What else we got here? So President's Day is also February 17th. County offices will be closed, so I'll take that day to, unfortunately, be after Valentine's Day, so you can't use that day as a Valentine's gift. But the holiday serves as federal recognition of the birthdays of George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, as well as all our other presidents, past and present. So that's February 17th, and I just mentioned, remember the county offices will be closed. And I also want to throw out a farewell to our own Matt Edmund. Matt has been our Assistant Director of Transportation and Land Range Planning. He's served Montgomery County for over 20 years. Matt started with the Planning Commission in 2004 as a transportation planner, and for the past 10 years, he's managed the Planning Commission Transportation Section. Over the time, he's been instrumental in a number of major projects. Matt created the Bike-Monco Plan and implemented that project. He drafted the first aviation policy plan for Montgomery County last year. He implemented the Turnpike Interchange Corridor Reinvestment Project with municipal partners from Norristown and Mill Grove. He created the Monco Pike Study, which is an official plan for the sixth-largest county-owned roadways. He led the county transportation grant program from 2018 to 2023. Matt created the county's complete streets policy, which still informs county road projects and planning today. And he also completed the Lafayette Street Extension Project and has recently led the Rich Pike Improvement Project, which was just finished at the first segment this year. That has had a huge impact on the county, and his involvement in so many of the transportation projects that have been funded, and many, many more that are currently underway or in the queue for funding. Obviously, we're going to miss Matt. I'm not sure why he would want to leave us, but that's okay. He's moving on to a new role. I guess it's okay to say we're great. So he's moving on to a new role, a new exciting role. So he'll be joining Chester County right over the river, and he'll be the Executive Director for their Planning Department. So I want to congratulate Matt on his new career path and wish him the best of success. And we want to thank you for all your hard work over the 20-plus years in Montgomery County. I know that you're, all the planning, all the different initiatives that I was at over this last year, you're a staple out there with these, you know, infrastructure improvements and these transportation projects, and you know you're certainly to be missed. But I'm sure we'll be talking planning over Chester County. So again, thank you for all your hard work.
I'll just add, thank you, Matt, you've done a tremendous job. I think everyone knows it, and it's hard to come across, you know, although there are many in the county who've had an impact, it's hard to come across someone who has a direct visible impact the way that you do and have for 20-plus years across the county. And so we're certainly sad to lose you. It's a great win for Chester County, and I think we're going to explore how we can place sanctions or some sort of tariffs on Chester County.
Only going to build half of Kyne Street.
Right, right.
Kyne Street, that's where we'll go.
That's it.
But congratulations to Chester, they're very lucky to have you, and look forward to working with you on all the ways that we can.
And Matt, I'll just say, you always exhibit such passion with your work, and that's one of the things that I'll always remember every time we were at, you know, ribbon cutting or your standing before us. It says a lot about, you know, your commitment to the work we do here in Montgomery County. And while 20 years is a long, long time, and so, you know, when I think about our role as leaders, it's, you know, the work you did here, the leadership under Scott France, when you go off to do bigger and better things, we've done our job as leaders, and you've certainly done great work to earn that new role. And so I want to congratulate you and wish you all the best.
So just one last thing. I mean, you guys covered a lot about Black History Month this month, and I just want to also thank, a lot of hard work went into all the preparation for all the different things that are going to be occurring each week here. So, and I look forward to try to get to some of those sessions as well. Last year, I was able to attend, we had the downstairs celebration, and it was an awesome event, and I look forward to seeing the same thing this year as well. And as Commissioner Winer mentioned, all the people in the county that worked so hard to make this month a reality, and I want to thank them for all their hard work as well.
Before we move on, I'll just make a comment as well about the budget in Harrisburg. It's incredibly important for us to advocate for a number of parts of the budget, including, for example, SEPTA funding is on the table, which is critical in the southeastern Pennsylvania. The governor's budget has $292.5 million allocated for mass transit, and that's going to be critical for everyone who utilizes SEPTA, not just directly as a passenger, but if you're frequenting the business where the workers are taking SEPTA, or your kids go to school where the teachers take SEPTA to get there, everyone benefits from public transit, and that's an important message that we'll carry to our legislators in Harrisburg as they decide on how to fund SEPTA sustainably and make sure that we have the level of service that is currently provided. There's also a number of public safety initiatives, including reducing gun violence, $30 million in grants for fire companies. We have a lot of collaboration work to do with our fire companies in the county, so that is something that could possibly be very helpful, as well as investment in life sciences and innovation. He had presented $30 million for investment in innovation in the life sciences, which is something that could help Montgomery County in particular. We've got a lot of great companies here at all levels, from startups to major, you know, major businesses that are job creators and true economic activity. He also, we proposed the whole home repairs provision in the budget, and that's something that we've seen has a long waitlist around the Commonwealth, as well as in Montgomery County, so that's something I look forward to talking to our legislators about as well. So with that, do you have any other comments? That will move on to the agenda, and I will bring on, we don't have many minutes to prove yet, or I'll bring on actually an announcement first on Heart Health Month with Cassidy Bowen from HHS.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me okay? And then I just, can you hold up, please? How's everyone doing today?
Good, how are you?
I apologize for not being there in person. I live about an hour away, out toward Lancaster. We had a little bit of a delay, so thank you for letting me be here virtually. Can everyone see the screen okay, doing okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. All right, so my name is Cassidy Bowen. I am one of the community health educators for Montgomery County Office of Public Health, and thank you for letting me be here today. I'm here to talk to you about American Heart Month, which is a nationwide observance that happens every February to raise awareness about heart disease and its impact on public health. And here at the county, we want to use this month as an opportunity to educate our residents about the importance of heart health and ways to prevent heart. Next slide, please. So unfortunately, heart disease is the number-one cause of death for both men and women in the United States, claiming more than 700,000 lives annually. As you can see from this list, there are a few different modifiable risk factors that can increase your risk for cardiovascular disease, otherwise known as heart disease, so having high blood pressure, high cholesterol, kidney disease, consuming an unhealthy diet, which we'll touch upon on the next slide, leading a sedentary lifestyle, being overweight or obese, and then consuming high amounts of tobacco or alcohol. There's also some non-modifiable risk factors that can also increase your risk, so family history, genetics play a part, age, the older you are, the more at-risk you are to develop in heart disease, and then certain racial and ethnic groups are more at risk, which would include African-American, Hispanic-American, and Native American populations. Next slide, please. So despite its prevalence, heart disease is largely preventable through making healthy lifestyle choices. So what can we do? The first thing is eat a proper diet, so just looking at this picture, you can see we want to try to eat a rainbow of different fruits and vegetables, so aiming for our high-fiber foods, foods that are high in vitamins and minerals, our whole grains, using low-fat dairy products, lean meats and lean proteins. And then we also do want to be consuming small amounts of healthy fats, so those would be unsaturated fats, which are things like canola oil, sunflower oil, and olive oil. And then we do want to be limiting our intake of saturated and trans fats, cholesterol, sodium, added sugar, and then again, be limiting our alcohol consumption as well. Next, we want to be aiming for at least 150 minutes of moderate physical activity a week. 150 minutes may seem like a lot at first, but remember you can break that number up throughout the week, and moderate just means that we're getting our heart rates going when we're doing that activity. We next want to be quitting tobacco products completely if possible. We want to be knowing our risks and getting regularly screened with our healthcare providers, so getting your blood pressure checked every time you go to your doctor's office, and then getting your cholesterol checked as well, which you can do with a blood test. In addition to these behaviors, we also want to be trying our best to manage stress, so practicing mindfulness, meditating, reading, whatever you can do to manage your stress, and then trying to get enough sleep during the night. That's going to vary person to person, but the general recommendation is about 60 hours per night. Next slide, please. So what are we doing here in the county to celebrate American Heart Month? The first thing is we're doing some social media campaigns, so be on the lookout for some various education that's going out throughout the month on our various social media platforms about heart disease, how to prevent it. I also encourage everyone, whether you're in the office or working from home, to wear red tomorrow, Friday, February 7th, International Wear Red Day, and it's just a way to raise awareness and show your support to fight the, to fight against the disease. As you can see, I'm wearing red. Don't tell anyone, I'll probably wear this sweater in tomorrow just to partake in the celebration. And next slide. The next thing that you can do to get involved is sign up for one of my hands, only CPR A P D and N R C A N trainings. So this is offered through our Office of Public Health for county employees. I offer classes on the third Wednesdays of the month at the Cal Center, Norristown, at 1430 Cal Street. So if you are, QR code on the left-hand side of the screen. If you are a Monco resident looking to get your certification, I offer classes on the first Tuesday of the month at the Simplicity Center in Norristown. And then if you're a Monco business or organization, I also do group trainings upon request. For both of those, you can fill out the QR code on the right side of the screen. The trainings themselves are free, but it does cost $24 per person to get their certification card from the American Heart Association, and then that certification is valid for students. Next slide, please. And then finally, I invite everyone to come out to our American Heart Month Celebration. So the Office of Public Health is collaborating with the Coroner's Office on Wednesday, February 19th, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. at the brand-new Coroner's Office. So if you have not seen it, it's a beautiful location. We're going to be doing a heart healthy cooking demo, heart health presentations, myself and Dr. Larry Ray will be presenting there, and then we'll also be doing free blood pressure screenings at the end of the month. We'll have some different resources to hand out. Registration is required, so if you're interested, fill out the QR code on the right side of the screen. Unfortunately, you'll see the message at the bottom. We have had our first 10 attendees register to get their wall-on gift cards, but we still invite everyone to attend. But that is everything, so thank you so much for your time today. I encourage everyone to celebrate American Heart Month by prioritizing your heart health and just spreading awareness to make a positive impact on our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments? Thank you so much for all your work, Cassidy. We will move on to public comment. Is there any public comment? And this is just for the comments for today's votes. We'll have another comment period at the end for future topics. We'll have another comment period at the end for future topics.
First up is
Oh, life, thanks, okay.
Tony Davis? Lily Taylor? So then, all I have for the room. Let it to go some new.
Okay.
And I hope you can hear me. Carmina Taylor?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, and this is for our public comment on today's votes. Just, and then we'll have another period for generals. Go ahead if it's
Just the vote, or I'd like to comment on your commendations and the needs of civil rights and what it really looks like in Montgomery County. So is that at the second public comment?
Yes, yeah, that'll be at the second period. So we'll come, we'll come back to you then.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next up was Adrian Seltzer.
Okay. Adrian, is your comment for, for the today's votes or for general? What's your vote?
No, that was for afterwards. I was just looking for the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries. We'll come back to you. Okay, so I'm going to move on with today's agenda, and we'll start with the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th, 2024, and January 23rd, 2025?
So move.
So moved by Commissioner DeBello, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Wider. Any board comment? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Minutes are approved. Pass Marine Calder to rate resolution regarding the authorization of Tefra approval for Axe Retirement Life Communities.
Thank you. Good morning. The Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982 is a federal law that requires public approval of taxes and financing for certain types of bonds. According to the Internal Revenue Code, this approval is in the form of a public hearing held by the issuer after a Tefra notice is published. The hearing gives the public the opportunity to comment on the proposed bond issuance. We had recently received a request for approval of a Tefra from the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority. If approved, the IDA would issue up to $108 million in bonds to finance improvements to facilities at Axe Retirement Life Communities in Bucks, as well as Montgomery Counties. The types of improvements include renovations and upgrades to residential living units, healthcare centers and common areas, technology advancement, and added memory care and assisted living units. Pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code, the public hearing was held by the IDA on January 22nd, 2025. There were no public comments, and the IDA approved the project and the issuance of the bonds for the, for the project. The Internal Revenue Code also requires that the chief elected official of the governmental unit that performed the IDA and the governmental unit having jurisdiction over the area in which a portion of the project is located approve the project. And therefore, the IDA has asked this board to approve the project as outlined in the resolution, and the approval would in no way obligate Montgomery County with respect to the project.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. None. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number One as described by Ms. Lori Calder?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Wider. Is there any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. So moving on, we have a number of appointments to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board as described on Exhibit G2. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Two as described on Exhibit G2?
So move.
So moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
Seconded by
Seconded by Commissioner Wider. Is there any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. So moving on to commissioners' appointments to the Montgomery County Local Emergency Planner Committee. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number Three as described on Exhibit G3?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Wider. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to commissioners' appointments to the Board of Managers at the youth center. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number Four as described on Exhibit G4?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Wider. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we'll hear from Marty Moss on our personnel list.
Morning, commissioners. Just want to apologize for fumbling the ball on the Fight Eagles song this morning. Thank you for picking me up and getting a touchdown on that, but go Birds. So you should have in front of you the final copy of the commissioner's department personnel list. It's a three-page document dated February 5th, 2025, with a timestamp of 11:31 AM. These transactions have been reviewed by management and are now presented for your consideration.
Separate off new hires.
What was that?
I do not have a list. I just have What do I have? Do you want that?
Just the top section.
So is this attached as an exhibit? It's in the personnel tab. So you can make a motion whenever you want to make it.
Okay, I motion on the personnel list to approve sections other and off, off role positions that have identified in the report.
There's a motion to approve sections other and off, off role for the personnel list. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Wider. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve new hires on the personnel list as presented by Marty Moss? I'll second it. Any board comment?
Well, to separate this off, I'm not going to call on any one individual, but there's stuff under that I don't support.
Okay. I'll have a comment, which is that we have listed a number of important positions, one of which is our Director of Immigrant Affairs. I'm absolutely thrilled that we have recruited really, I mean that because she has a critical role right now, Nellie Jimenez-Aravala, and she's someone who's the executive director currently of an organization in Norristown. I see some nodding heads for those who love her. An extraordinary leader in the community. Served as CEO for nine years of an organization that I think started with half a million dollar budget and five or seven staff when she was first executive director into now one that has an eight million dollar budget and 75 staff. Provides critical services from childcare, healthcare, maternal health clinics, English as a second language courses. Aklamo is, is really a fantastic organization. Recently profiled in the Philadelphia Inquirer twice due to their outstanding work in the community, and look forward to bringing her on board as Director of Immigrant Affairs and we can make sure that we're serving over 100,000 residents that are foreign-born in Montgomery County who play essential roles across the economic sectors and spheres, and really look forward to working with her and making sure that we best serve all of our residents.
And I would say I'm equally excited to have Nellie join the team. I've known Nellie for some time now and her work in the Norristown community, and she's done amazing things to really grow Aklamo's footprint in the Latino community and has really put some nice programming together to ensure that that community feels supported. And, you know, I'll just say that this office, you know, really serves as a critical resource to help connect immigrants with the services that we have throughout Montgomery County. And I just want to highlight, you know, Montgomery County thrives because of, you know, the immigrants that are proud to call Montgomery County home. I oftentimes think of when I was a kid, we had exchange students from Montella, Italy, stay with us, and Montella is the sister city of Norristown. And a lot of Italian immigrants immigrated from Montella to Norristown to plant roots. And so we are a community of immigrants, whether you came here 100 years ago or you came here two years ago. And so I'm excited that Nellie will be able to create a vision for how we support immigrants in this community.
Great. So moving to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
A motion passes. So moving to an advertisement of bids and RFPs under Exhibit A. I'll make a motion to approve the advertisement bids and RSPP, sorry, RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second? Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
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 A motion passes. Moving on to awards of contract. We have a number of contracts here. I want to cite, I'll cite one after we make the motion. Is there a motion to approve contract awards amendments and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B? Moved by Commissioner Wider. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. I want to note that there's a playground investment here in Green Lake Park, and it's really exciting. The current playground's been there for 20 years. It was built in 2000, but we're going to make it better than ever and also more accessible. So this is going to be inclusive, wheelchair accessible, have many different elements that are accessible whether someone has visual impairment or any other accessibility needs that this team has very thoughtfully investigated, looked into what is, you know, best practice, and it's going to be something that many, many people enjoy. Green Lake is a really great park that the county is operating, and, you know, look forward to approving that project. Anyone have any other comments?
Well, I think that the comments on the playground is good because it's also going to include, I don't know if you mentioned it or not, but it's also going to include the sensory type equipment as well. So I think it's a, out of Green Lake, I think it'll be very well-received in our community.
All right, with that, we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, so with that, we'll move to awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force under Exhibit C. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force attached Exhibit C?
So move.
Seconded by Commissioner Wider. Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That will move to other comment, and this is for topics that are germane to county business that we could consider going forward in the future.
First up is Doug Bauer.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you for our esteemed guests from the NAACP. A lot of them have left the room already, but My name's Doug Bauer. I'm from Paloments and Township. I'm commenting on things that happened in the last, the last meeting. First of all, I'd like to give us some thoughts to the DEI discussion earlier today in here. When we use the term DEI, just remember what it means. Instead of saying DEI, say diversity, inclusion, and equity, or whatever order you want to. That means more than just saying DEI. I think DEI just bounces right off of people, but when you say equity, inclusion, diversity, then they know what you're talking about. Anyway, so last meeting, there was some discussion about sovereign citizenship and sovereign county. We've been through this three times in my lifetime, 70s. This cropped up. Middle of the 80s it cropped up. I thought it was all dead and buried. The idea that the United States, a county or even an individual that believes that they are above the law and they don't have to listen to any laws, pay attention to any laws, pay any taxes, get insurance for their vehicles, obtain driver's licenses after they prove they're able to drive, these things are normal for a functioning society. I just want to tell you that every day we come here, we see thoughts of make-believe laws and things that are in the Constitution that aren't there. There's nothing to support sovereign citizenships. There's nothing really even in the Constitution to support local militias. The only body that's allowed to have a militia is the government. It's mentioned in the Constitution, but it gives no authority to local militias. With that said, I'm glad that we have commissioners that absolutely can see this through this smokescreen of misinformation, and I'm sorry to see that it's here in Montgomery County. Montgomery County is a highly educated county, and yet we have people wandering around the streets thinking that they don't have to pay for driver's licenses or insurance or anything else.
Any further comment?
Thank you.
Next up?
Up next is Gary Knights.
Good morning, everybody. Today, I want to talk about what diversity, equity, and inclusion really means and why it must be for everyone, including white men who feel left behind. That I'm saying this during Black History Month does not mean that I don't support it. I really do. DEI is about fairness. It's about ensuring that no one, no matter their race, age, gender, background, or circumstances, gets overlooked in pursuit of opportunity. Yet in today's America, too many young white men are struggling. They're falling behind in education, in the workforce, and in mental health. Many feel like they've been forgotten, dismissed as privileged, but their lived reality tells a different story. So we need to ensure that they are and feel included. Ignoring this problem isn't just unfair, it's dangerous. When people feel abandoned, resentment grows, and we see this in Lower Providence where I live. Some fall into despair while others get lured into extremist ideologies that prey on their isolation. And this brings me to my second point, the Nazi salute. Let's be clear. There's nothing more un-American than a symbol of hate that stands out against everything this country was built on. America fought a war to defeat Nazism. Thousands of brave Americans of all races gave their lives to stop it. One of my grandfathers was in the United States making 40-millimeter shells that were used against the Germans and Japanese. My other grandfather was in the German army, fighting the Russians. But neither of them were Nazis. They both abhorred Nazism, and I learned that growing up. And the Nazi salute represents oppression, racism, and tyranny, the very things that America stands against. Those who use it are not honoring free speech. They're dishonoring the sacrifices made for our freedoms. So let's do better. Let's make sure that DEI helps everyone who needs it. Let's Let's create pathways for young men of all backgrounds to find purpose, to succeed, and to be included in the American dream. And let's reject the symbols of hate that seek to divide us. Because America isn't about tearing people down, it's about lifting people up. Getting rid of DEI isn't the answer. I know there's calls to do that. It needs to evolve to help everyone, including young white men who are falling behind. Getting rid of Nazi salutes and everything they stand for is an answer. One represents a chance to unite and uplift, and the other's a symbol of hate. Let's fix what's broken, not abandon what can help. And let's reject the things that seek to divide us and have no place in America. Thank you.
Up next is Chris Brady. Yes.
Rock.
Rock.
Yeah, sorry, my handwriting is terrible. Sorry, hi. I just have a comment about DEI. Anytime something goes wrong, I have to hear about DEI. They lowered standards, that's why this happened. No one ever can point to the standard that's been lowered though, because the people that really hate DEI don't really care about standards. If somebody hates DEI, they believe one thing, that if a woman, or a black person, or a gay or a trans person has a job, then the standards must have been lowered for them in order to get it. That is because they believe that women and black people and gay people are inherently less competent than straight white men. This is a real thing, that these guys really say. Darren Beatty, who is now the Undersecretary of Public Diplomacy at the State Department, says this, competent white men must be in charge for things to work. Unfortunately, our entire national ideology is predicated on coddling the feelings of women and minorities and demoralizing competent white men. That is the Undersecretary for Public Diplomacy at the State Department of the United States. That is the competence at diplomacy that he is bringing to the table. Now, you may not realize this, but I am a white man. It's true, I know. I have lived among white men and I have worked among white men for my entire life. And one secret that I can reveal is that we are, as a people, not especially competent. We are not unusually competent. We are not uniquely competent. We are as competent as any other group of people in the history of the world. Now, if you go back and look at American history, it is true that you see white men as far as the eye can see. And that is because for 200 years, it was illegal to give those jobs to anybody else. And once it became legal, we, white men, did our best to kind of make sure it was other white men that were hired. We hired our friends, we hired our families, we hired the people that we went to school with, which were mostly white men, because it was white men who were doing the admitting. And who did they want to admit? Well, were these white men competent? Sometimes. Were they often incompetent? Yes. Were they often corrupt criminals, liars, frauds? Well, for a very brief period in this country's history, we have been making real progress at building an actual meritocracy and eliminating the systems that kept incompetent people in power, that kept corrupt people in power just because they were white and men, and making a world that fulfills the promise of liberty and justice for all. When people say that they are against DEI, I believe we need to understand what they are asking for. They are not demanding a meritocracy. Meritocracy is not what we have. What they are demanding is the resegregation of America. They are demanding the repeal of not just the last 20 years, but the last 50, 80, 100 years. They want to undo the Civil Rights Movement. They want to undo women's suffrage. They want to undo the entire 20th century. We have worked for too long and we have fought for too hard. And we have come too close to building that free republic for us to give up now. Thank you.
I will take a moment to break from public comment and just invite our President Judge, who just came in the room, if she doesn't mind.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to take a few minutes of personal perspective. Mary, come on over. Mary Morella, who has actually been with the county for 39 years. I know it says 26 on the sheet. But back in 1986, after spending several years as a court reporter in Philadelphia, she took a test to come here to Montgomery County. She scored the highest on that test of anyone else taking the test. And what happened back then is they hired the court reporters per diem. So Mary came on per diem as a court reporter. She worked in every division, floated and worked for every judge. Now, to understand what a court reporter does, I think it's so important that you understand this. I look at her and I always say she has the hardest job in the courtroom. She has a little box, and there's a lot of little keys on that box. And not one of them has a letter or a symbol on it. And she manages, now you know how fast judges and lawyers can talk. She manages to get every word down of who's speaking and when they're speaking. And she's done that for 39 years here in Montgomery County. So after she was per diem for several years, she finally got assigned to President Judge Corso at the time, that was 2000. She worked with him until he retired. And then I was fortunate enough to have Mary assigned to my court back in 2010 when I first got on the bench. We're now entering our 16th year together, and Mary has decided after 39 years to retire. I'm going to tell you something. She has transcribed some of the most complex medical malpractice cases we've done. She has transcribed some very high-profile criminal homicides. Guy Silo, Robinowitz, they might ring some bells. She has seen it all. I won't mention our last trial. We had a doozy. But she has done it with such kindness, such respect. She has a passion about her, she has a work ethic. Just to go to that point, our entire team is here. And Paula, another court reporter, and her dear friend, Paula has as much tenure as Mary does. These two have the most tenure of any court reporters, I think, ever in the county. And we are blessed to have them in our court system. Mary, she's a friend, I adore you, and we are going to miss you beyond words that I can say. I just want to thank you for the time to allow me to tell you about this amazing woman. Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you to commissioners. Amazing Judge Carluccio, Judge Corso, our lovely staff who I dearly love. They're like family to me and to the county. It's been a wonderful experience and employment here, given the opportunities for me and my family. And I really appreciate working here. It's been an honor.
We're so grateful.
Even though I'll go. Don't go strong. I worked here for 39 years, so it's wonderful.
We're so grateful to have had you for this time. And I was born in 1986. Everybody is just. But no, it's, I mean, it's such a privilege to have a chance to even, you know, be a part of your journey here. And we get to meet with so many of the staff and the milestones that they've had. So just congratulations.
Thank you so much.
On all of your service, thank you. And if you have any other comments?
Yeah, I would just say thank you for choosing Montgomery County to be your home employer for 39 years. I always say, coming from the private sector, the loyalty to organizations is not like it used to be. And so I want to thank you for your service to this county that I love. And I wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, echo that, thank you. 39 years is an awful long time. You've got to see a lot, you know, sitting in a courthouse over those 39 years. And I'm sure you enjoyed working with all the judges. But the one you're with now is probably your favorite, I would say. But no, thank you for all your hard work and service. And so after 39 years, have your fingers gotten tired yet?
My shoulders.
Shoulders, yeah. So no, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Judge. I really love everyone.
And if you'd like to come up, we can take a photo. President Judge wants to come up as well.
I did want to thank my dear friend Paula. He's been with me for 39 years.
And she's still going. She's now our chief court reporter. So thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you.
It's great, all the photos today, you'll remember what was going on. Hopefully we'll have won this. Yeah, we've got to move. I know we're just a few minutes away from wanting to head out to the rally. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, a couple. Teresa? Yes, Teresa.
Good morning. I am Teresa Van Paris. I am from a very small island in the Caribbean that has quite a relationship with the United States. It's the birthplace of one of our founding fathers, Alexander Hamilton. So that makes me a vision from news. And I just rise to say how grateful I am of this position that's been in place, that's been new here, this newly formed position. I want to extend my greatest gratitude for the creation of the position of Director of Immigrant Affairs. This new role represents a significant step forward in ensuring the voices and needs of immigrants are heard and prioritized. It's a meaningful commitment to fostering a community where diversity is celebrated and everyone has a chance to contribute and thrive. Thank you for your leadership and for championing initiatives that make a difference in the lives of so many. I am excited to see this position will positively impact our community and I'm hopeful for the inclusive future we are building together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next on Zoom would be Carmina Taylor.
Good morning, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, for context, I've seen new faces in the room with the previous public speakers. My name is Carmina Taylor. I am from Penlin, Brooklyn Township. I have been doing civil rights work since I was 16 years old. And I want to express, and I'm coming tonight in the context of being the facilitator of the Montgomery County Cultural Competency, I mean Cultural Proficiency and Equity Student Ambassadors Program. I have been doing this work for five years, anchored out of Sheltonham in nine different school districts in Montgomery County. I'd like to just make a note that to accommodate civil rights leaders in the county is a very serious thing. And I am imploring on the leadership of this county to take the time to find out more about the civil rights efforts that are being done in all the branches in Montgomery County. Now that the federal government is dismantling the Civil Rights Department, or the Civil Rights Office of the Department of Education, where civil rights becomes relevant in Montgomery County now and has always been relevant, are the achievement gap disparities in our school district. So I'm going to provide the three of you, the children, the 2021 Children's First PCCY report on the achievement gap in Montgomery County. You will see the achievement gap disparities between white and Hispanic students, black and Hispanic students versus white students in the county. And it breaks down all the school districts. What I think is the greatest thing that we need to pay attention to, and you guys supporting the leadership, are all of the disparities that are occurring in our school systems. And families are having a hard time navigating the nuances. And we have a great deal of rogue school board, school board leadership across the county that's not addressing the needs of marginalized families and students. So I just wanted to take a point. When you talk about Black History Month, I hope that all those branch presidents will invite the communities and the communities outside of their jurisdiction to their Black History programs, to the civil rights work that they're doing, because I'm suspect of all of that. And I think there's a very serious problem that we have now with this escalated conversation about DEI. We need to highlight the diversity that's in Montgomery County. We need to highlight the fact that educational equity is not existing in our school districts. And there are children and high school students suffering from not feeling like they belong in their school community. So that's inclusion, making sure we include everyone. It's not necessarily about race. It's about making sure everyone has equal access to feeling like they belong in their communities and their school systems. Civil rights is made sure that people are getting a fair balance in all things. And what happens is that the greatest disparity is among blacks or people that are of color. So I think we have to lower the bar down some and turn down the dial, because it's a very serious thing. So Neil, I will be following up with you, because I do want to know the impetus for the commendations, because I feel like you don't know all that's really going on with these branches. And I think it's a very serious thing. You can't just make it, you know, something because it's Black History Month. As one of the gentlemen said, Black History, American History is every month. But what's specifically happening in our wealthy county and our wealthy school districts is the marginalization. And listen, if you don't have proficiency, you can't thrive. For the gentleman that talked about white men, white students are not doing well in school systems as well. So we need to raise the proficiency rate of all students so they can thrive after they need expansion. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your comment.
Up next is Adrian Seltzer.
Hello. Adrian Seltzer Winwood. I'm not used to being so quick on public comments. But I wrote something this week in the newsletter that I did for Stand Up for Lower Marin and Narba. And there's been a lot of anti-Semitism and racism happening continually in our school system. And I, and they are addressing it. They are working on it. In fact, the NAACP Mainline Branch and JRC of Greater Philadelphia Federation are partnering to bring these two communities together. And because always, as always, together we're stronger. But with the heat that I've been seeing throughout the country, it just reminded me of a tale from 1946 called First They Came. There've been many versions over the years, but they all conclude with, "Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me." I know, a lot of you know that I don't keep quiet. As an empathetic human being, I do not believe that speaking out against hate is political. It is your right to disagree. I will advocate for the protection of those currently under attack, including the trans and queer community as well as immigrants. I will raise my voice when I see one marginalized community blaming another marginalized community. The anti-diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts are resegregation efforts. To clarify some history, black people were not the only ones affected by segregation and discrimination. It impacted white women, people with disabilities, Jewish people, individuals of Asian and Hispanic descent, and anyone, just anyone else who wasn't a white man. Ultimately, it will affect you, and if it doesn't affect you, it'll affect someone you know. So I'm asking you to protect our community from the reasonable rulings that are happening at the federal level, and speak up and look out for your neighbor. I thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Kofi, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Kofi. He's unmuted, but we can't hear you. We have one more public commenter.
So we're trying to call on Kofi?
Yes, and he did unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Kofi O'Shea, and I'm also elected township supervisor in Talonsen. I believe in the freedom of expression, particularly the right to petition the government for redress of grievance as given in the First Amendment. I was told once I was the most quiet activist. I was told once I was the most quiet activist someone has ever met. I believe Commissioner Mckeisha and Commissioner Winder are aware and comfortable running my mouth in spite of that. The rest of this comment is towards Commissioner DeBello. Freedom of expression is a pretty unique right in this country. To give the opposing argument, celebrating Nazi imagery is largely illegal in Germany. As we talk about Black History Month, it could be argued that we didn't finish Reconstruction from the Civil War in the same way Germany did from World War II because of this freedom. I like some of the more explicit framing of these rights in the Pennsylvania Constitution that all of us elected officials took an oath to support, obey, and defend. Article 1, Section 7 reads in part, "The free communication of thoughts and opinions is one of the invaluable rights of man. And every citizen may speak freely, write, and print on any subject, being responsible for the abuse of that liberty." I'm aware that Commissioner DeBello liked one of my former colleague's Facebook posts defending her video. I'm done asking Republican elected officials and leadership for condemnation. It's too late. So my request to Commissioner DeBello is to do it right now. Mimic my former colleague's video right now. Use your freedom of expression to explain the joke. My former colleague voluntarily resigned. She has full rights as any citizen. You're in the minority seat. There is no recall in Pennsylvania. Your guy won last November. You won't lose your position, so go all the way. Stop beating around the bush. I'm very tired of the anti-diversity, equity, and inclusion crowd saying to be inclusive of Nazis. I'm a proud American. That's the wrong meaning. And to end more positively, I also want to get the writing rail done. I will be reaching out to all three commissioners at some point in the next month or two about how to get our trains going again. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Final public commenter is Cliff Butch Kofer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good with my last name. Obviously, I'm an immigrant originally. But, and so that's what I would like to comment about today is I'd like to thank the commissioners for this newly-created Immigration Affairs Office. And one thing, when I was looking into this, there's over 100,000 immigrants in Montgomery County. And the fact that the commissioners created this office to help these folks really spoke to me. I can remember my grandmother speaking Swiss German to us, saying that we are all Americans regardless of the language we speak. We've all heard some of the recent vitriol about immigrants. And just, I would challenge every person to self-reflect a little bit and consider that we are all immigrants throughout history. Even the indigenous peoples came from Asia originally and then from the Rift Valley in Kenya and Tanzania. In fact, we were just in Africa last fall. I saw the skeleton of Lucy. She's the grandmother of every single person on the planet. So at some level, everyone is extended family. At the local Montgomery County level, my wife and I volunteer at a food bank in Sauterston. We serve everyone who wants a box of fresh fruits and vegetables. It does not matter whether they're native born or immigrants. The bottom line is they're just hungry people. I've seen mothers with tears running down their faces with little kids in the backseat. It makes it real. They're people. They love their children just as much as we do. And last thing to reflect on, my wife and I retired and we love to travel. And we just got back from France. And one thing the French are very proud of is the Statue of Liberty, which they gave to us back in 1886, I believe it was. What a lot of people don't know is that the poem at the plaque at the bottom of Lady Liberty's feet contains an invitation to immigrants. A lot of people just know the first few words, "Give me your tired, your poor..." dot, dot, dot. But later on are the words, "Send these." I would challenge you all to go read the last three sentences of that poem. This is nothing but an invitation to immigrants. Finally, I'm proud that Montgomery County is supporting our immigrants through this new affairs office. Our immigrants are an asset to our community. And who knows? Maybe one of them will be a county commissioner one day. Thank you.
That is all for public comment.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to any closing commissioner comments.
No, I'm ready to go to the rally.
Okay.
I just have one quick comment. I was referred to a post that I saw on Facebook. When I saw the post, I wasn't happy with it. And when I went in, I, I believe I hit angry because I was surprised that she actually did that post. When I found out about it, I went back and the post was taken down. What's being propagated out there, I don't, I can't defend or not defend because I haven't seen, I haven't been able to review. But what I, one of the pictures I saw was you could see multiple emojis or whatever you call those things underneath the post. And it doesn't tell you who liked or who didn't like or whatever. But I don't support what her putting the post up. I don't understand why she did it. I think, I agree that, you know, hand gestures, no matter who does it. And we have to make sure that when we display frustration and anger with those hand gestures, that we apply that same anger and frustration with anybody that does those same hand gestures. Don't pick and choose who we want to get angry with. But again, I'm going on record that I didn't support what she did. I was, thought I was, I didn't comment on the post. I actually just was doing, I thought I was hitting angry. If I did, then I apologize for that. But I wasn't that happy and I don't support the post.
I do have a comment. I just want to applaud our friends and neighbors in Talmensen. You know, when you're feeling kind of overwhelmed by what's happening at the federal level, local communities, local electives can really make a difference. And what Laura Smith did in Talmensen was horrible. And I'm proud to see colleagues and community members standing up against what she did. And when people speak out, we hold people accountable. So let's keep doing that.
I mean, I'll just say, you know, this is widely written about. We've had comments covered in the past. But, you know, I think it's, it was fairly clear what, not even fairly clear, it was, it was completely clear in terms of what the gesture now former supervisor was making was online. You know, there was a big debate over whether Elon Musk had did this intentionally or not. People can have that debate and have a conversation. But once that happened, it was very clear what Laura Smith was doing and was making light of. And I think it's, you know, abhorrent. And we all know what gesture she was making and what it means and what feelings it would evoke. And she did the right thing by resigning. Unfortunately, I think there's still an opportunity for her to fully explain why. And, and, you know, I genuinely am not one to immediately call on people to resign for one thing. But there still hasn't really been an understanding or an explanation from her. And perhaps she doesn't know anyone one if she doesn't sit in any position of public trust. But I think that's something that we must call on and ask for. Because, yeah, it, I think an explanation is owed to many of our residents who rightfully took great offense to that. And with that, I will, I'll move on. But we're going to move on to salary board briefly before we, before we turn over to, to go across the street. So upcoming meeting dates. Our next meeting will be Thursday, February 20th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. in the boardroom. And as I said, we'll have a state of the county on February 18th, Tuesday. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the February 6th meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That the meeting was adjourned and we will move to the salary board. Is there any public comment from the salary board?
Good afternoon, salary board members. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. List consists of new positions, new hires, other transactions, and a list of employees going off role. The four-page document dated February 5th, 2025, with a timestamp of 11:31 a.m. All transactions have been reviewed by management and are now presented to consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the February 6th, 2025 salary board presentation as given by Mr. Marty Moss?
So moved.
So moved by acting controller, acting controller?
Still acting controller for probably one more day.
One more day. So moved by acting controller Tom Linder. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Who want to oppose? Commissioner DeBello, motion passes. All right, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn the February 6th, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any board comment? All in favor? Stop? No. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.